So, okay, I think we're recording. So, welcome everyone. Welcome to 2022. Let's hope it's going to be a better year for all of us, right? And I think that we can help make it so by setting our intentions and writing our way into them. So, we were thinking, not so much about New Year's resolutions, but intentions and using our creative imagination as a way to, you know, sharpen and stimulate our sense of curiosity about what this year will hold and to sort of go into it with a positive sense, expecting the positive, right? So that's the kind of writing we'll be offering you today. We're going to do three short prompts, and Audrey's going to explain a little bit more about prompt-based writing, but mainly it's about going fast and not overthinking, you know, just write from the heart and see where you go and banish your inner critic and let out whatever wants to come out. It needs to be here. So writing with that sense of almost childlike joy that we used to have, that kind of sense of playfulness. And we're at the end, also in that sense of creative play, we're going to create a collaborative souvenir for us all to take away and and sort of that can be a talisman of what our collective intentions are for writing in this new year. So Audrey.
Yes, well, I think you explained what I would say about prompt-based writing. It really is about just letting it go and yeah, not thinking, you know, just letting your pen go, letting your fingers fly and really just diving deep into that without too much thinking mind. So I just want to introduce the prompts by saying that I don't make New Year's resolutions anymore. I used to do it and then I decided partly because of the work that I have done in the past as a birth doula woman, somebody who helps women who are having babies. And Jennifer and I began this workshop series because of some of the resonances that we found between the creative birthing, a creative work and birthing an actual physical child. And realizing that really, I would tell my birth clients, you know, planning is not something that you want to be doing, specific planning around your birth, how it's going to go, what the outcomes are going to be, what you're going to produce. Because it's really, you're in a position of being in touch with the mystery, in touch with the unknowable, even something divine. And I think to try to plan that and put it in a box doesn't work very well. You really need to approach that with this open heart and a sense of surrender and willingness to surrender. So, however, at the same time, especially if you're a writer or a creative person, doing absolutely no planning can often lead you to a place of where you're where you end up is not at all where your desire or intention might have led you. So I like to think of it as a sort of dance between these two parts of yourself, this kind of creative, joyful, expansive dreaming part and the more practical planning part. And that's really what we're going to try to help you do today is to sort of coax these two parts together kind of by giving you a safe container to surrender within and to just do that dreaming. So the final parallel, I think, with some of the birthing stuff that we that I have learned is the value of community. And that is something that we really emphasize in our Birth Through Truth Story Workshop series, which we'll tell you a little bit more about later. And it can really help to have those allies, those warm, welcoming, cheering on entities who are walking the path with you. So, so that's the intention behind what we're doing. And now I will invite you, well, I think Jennifer's going to share her screen so we can have up here a little bit of visual cues for you as you dive into these prompts. And the first one is going to be, well, the first two actually are really going to be, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm just trying to find a full screen. There we go.
Got it. Yes, so the first two are really going to be, the goal is going to be really to release the old stories from the old year or the old years that you were telling about yourself as a writer and to really open up and let the new ones come forth. So I always think that know thyself is a good place to start. And this first prompt that we're offering up, which should be next on the slides, is going to be inviting you to just kind of start where you are. So what's the story that you tell about yourself? If somebody says, you know, what do you write? What kind of writer are you? What do you say? Or maybe what's the story that you tell yourself about the kind of writer that you are? And so we invite you to imagine you've met somebody at a party, maybe even a New Year's party, like a New Year's party that maybe didn't take place this year. And to just begin this prompt with a phrase, "As a writer, I..." And you'll have seven minutes for this and then we'll call you back with our bell. So begin now and just go dive right in and we will call you back when the seven minutes is up.
Give another minute. To bring that to a close. So, welcome back and welcome. I think we had a person or two maybe join us in the interim. So we're in the middle of doing some writing prompts. And the second prompt in this that's related to this is inviting you to move into the dreaming and imagining phase and the looking ahead phase. So a year from now, when you meet up maybe with the person you were talking to now about the path and looking at 2022 as the past year, what is going to be the story that you would like to tell about yourself as a writer at that point? And I would encourage you to focus not maybe so much on the specific details, on the types of writing that you're doing, but maybe even more on the feeling that you would like to have about yourself or about the year. And sometimes this can be really fun to approach by doing a list. So you might do something like a list of adjectives about how you want to feel. And just letting yourself get into that state where you can kind of give yourself permission to spin the gold of story from the straw of your experience, whatever that might be, and letting yourself just dream and fantasize. So again, seven minutes for this, and this is really leading you into that new story that you're hoping to tell, that new newness. And we will call you back again in seven minutes. Another 30 seconds or so. I just remembered that I forgot to remind people of something that we often do in our workshop series, which is take a breath. Sometimes we get so wrapped up in the energy and momentum that it's hard to settle back down into our bodies. So before I turn it over to Jennifer for the second half of the prompts, how about if everybody just takes one nice deep breath in and let your body settle and let whatever you experienced with those first two prompts just sink into you? All right. All right. So I'm writing along with you on these and I hope you wrote yourselves into a happy place, projecting yourself into a year in the future as a writer. And the next prompt, which is the last one, is the most fanciful. So imagine that some wonderful beckoning creative spirit is opening up a portal to the gem-studded halls of your creative imagination. I'm imagining sort of a crystal cave, you know? So entering this inner sanctum, you're amazed to see all these glittering treasures lying there. Each one is a story waiting for your creative touch to bring it to life. So as you go in there, which stories are you drawn to pick up and explore as this new year begins? What do you think you will want to be writing as you come into 2022? So we're back to the present moment. And the open sentence to begin this little spurt of writing is, "In the coming year, I will write what?" So let your imagination soar with this one. Pick up some beautiful crystals and and let them sweep you away. Okay, and we're going to take a little bit longer for this prompt, probably more like eight or nine minutes. We'll call you back soon. Have fun.
We'll call you back soon. Have fun. Give that another minute. Okay. I hate to interrupt you, but we have we have a couple more things to do here. So what I'd like to invite you to do is to put in the chat just just one line in this, in the coming year, I will write, and then put your line, finish the sentence in the chat. So you might want to look through what you just wrote and pick out a sentence that that you're 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 happy with, that intrigues you, that makes you smile. And just put it in the chat. And what I'm going to do while we're in small groups, just briefly to do some sharing, I'm going to compile those lines into a collaborative poem, and we'll see what we get. Okay? So the chat is open for you. And yeah, in the coming year, I will write this finish the sentence in the chat. And meanwhile, Audrey.
Yes, so meanwhile, yes, Jennifer is going to be doing all the technical wizardry behind the scenes to set you up in breakout rooms. And this will be she'll, before she sends you in there, she'll tell you a little bit more about that. But I just wanted to mention, one week from today is our kickoff for month four of our Birth Through Truest Story Workshop. And the way we've set it up is we have every month a masterclass that kicks off the month. So this one coming up is about world building in either memoir or fiction. So how do you create a really rich world for your characters to live in? And then you can either, I'll put the link in the chat. You can either just join us for the masterclass or you can do the month-long series, which also includes a writing circle and a couple of opportunities to interact with myself and Jennifer in our office hours. So we invite you to consider that. It's a little earlier than this time on next Sunday. It starts at 9:00 AM Pacific or 12:00 noon Eastern. So we invite you to do that, and we're excited to see all these chat sentences coming in. I know I loved that. I just wrote along with you as well. And I feel like I, in just that short compressed time of seven minutes, seven minutes and 10 minutes, I really went into some amazing stuff that I didn't expect. And I think that's one of the powerful things about this workshop series that we're offering. You know, it's it seems like it's very, you know, wow, a seven-minute prompt. Like, what can you possibly do with that? But somehow, given the community, the format, the invitation, the container, I don't know exactly what it is, but it's kind of magical. So we hope that you had that experience too, and that you might want to join us again.
Okay, so now in the breakout rooms, you'll be in little groups of three or four. I hope mostly three. And it's helpful if somebody would be willing to be the timekeeper with your, you know, maybe with your phone, your timer on your phone, and just give each other about three minutes and just share whatever you want to share about your yourself as a writer, past, present, or future. But maybe focusing especially on the future and your intentions and, you know, where you've been and where you are and where you're going. So we'll have about 10 minutes in the breakout rooms, and then we'll come back together. And I hope to have a wonderful poem ready for you by the time you come back. Okay? So here we go. I'm going to open them up.